Now we'll come to order. Good morning. Today is the twentieth day of February. The time is ten o'clock. The Board of Commissioners is in session. All three commissioners are present. If we could get you identify yourself, starting over here.
Oh, sorry. I'm Amanda Tersin. I'm the Office Manager for the Treasurers' Office.
Okay.
Brad Smith, the Assessors' Office.
Deborah Swob's Operations.
Richard Beck, Villain Services, While Party Operations.
Allison Tate, Juvenile Services.
Richard Mayer, Juvenile Services.
Josh Brown, Operations.
Kevin Jesse, Juvenile Services.
Deborah Jesse, Wife.
Okay.
Stephanie Thompson, Sheriff's Office.
I'm with the Duncan Communications.
IT guy.
Bonnie over Billy, Reporters' Office. And then we have the Reporters' Office.
Katie Recl's Office.
All right. Well, do we have any others that are? We have Allison here. She didn't identify herself.
I did. I was on board.
Oh, okay.
I just moved on you.
Oh, okay. You moved on us. All right. Good enough. All right, Madam Clerk, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, sir.
All right, we have one employee recognition. I'll ask Commissioner Davidson if he could read their employee recognition.
All right, this is for Richard Barr. Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor.
Mayor.
Mayor. For big one, twenty-five years of service. So, Richard has dedicated twenty-five years of service to Ada County over Richard's twenty-five-year tenure with Ada County Juvenile Services. He has worked in numerous positions throughout the detention facility, including night shift, day shift, assistant supervisor, supervisor, and his current position as Assistant Detention Manager. Richard excels at being flexible and stepping up when other duties as assigned situations present themselves. Over the years, Richard has taken on numerous specialized duties, including policy development, Pria Coordinator, and training duties for the detention team. He is a post-certified instructor, master instructor for appropriate use of force, and has played a key role in developing the curriculum used for post-juvenile detention academy. Richard is our go-to historian for all things juvenile detention and provides invaluable information anytime we need to understand the past development of our current operations. Richard can add humor to any situation, no matter how big or small, which often leads to staff seeking him out to process unique situations that arise in the juvenile detention setting. In Richard's free time, he likes to explore local farmers' markets, take road trips to wonderful destinations, spend time with friends, and have a quiet day with a good book. Congratulations, Richard Mayer, twenty-five years of service.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of Richard?
I thought I'd speak for about all three at the end. That's great.
Okay, that'd be fine. Anybody else? All right. Because we have two others. I will read this one. This is for Kevin Jesse. Kevin Jesse, there you go. Kevin Jesse has dedicated twenty-five years of service to Ada County with Juvenile Services at the detention facility, initially involved in a contracted program for youth in the custody of the Idaho Department of Juvenile Corrections. He later transitioned to working directly with the general population youth at the juvenile facility. In his roles as detention officer and assistant supervisor, Kevin has been a consistent presence on the day shift, providing stability and leadership. Over the years, Kevin has demonstrated a wonderful ability to balance being firm, kind, and supportive in his interactions with the youth during emotionally charged interactions, which results in a positive response from youth. Kevin has experienced, as a certified post-instructor, teaching verbal de-escalation techniques and effective communication strategies. He's also played a role in training new juvenile detention officers, contributing to the development of scenarios and practical exercises at the juvenile detention facility. Outside of work, Kevin enjoys time with his wife, Deborah, their four children, and four grandchildren. Kevin adores being a grandfather and loves spending time with his grandchildren whenever possible. Kevin also tries to get outdoors, often where he often flies fly fishing and, but where he enjoys fly fishing and bow hunting. Okay, and you want to waylu talk to all of me, and then we'll take other comments as well. Okay, and Commissioner Daley, would you read Johnny?
Johnny.
Johnny Swift.
Johnny Swift started working full-time at Ada County Juvenile Services on February twenty-second, nineteen ninety-nine. Twenty-five years. Johnny worked in victim mediation and as a detention officer before starting work as a juvenile probation officer in June nineteen ninety-nine. Johnny has worked in several different areas, including time in the female unit, drug court, court investigation, high-risk unit, and EMS electronic monitoring, EM, electronic monitoring officer, and as a field training officer for new employees. Johnny is a post-certified JPO and certified in appropriate use of force, ARCON, and OC. Johnny has been trained in EPIC, LEAP, motivational interviewing, solution-focused, as well as graduate response, and she has attended many trainings over the years to further her knowledge of working with high-risk youth. Johnny is a post-certified instructor in breathalyzer training and has taught various classes at post, including addictions, cultural diversity, suicide prevention in detention, and this year will be teaching case management. Good trainer. Johnny is currently the president of Idaho Juvenile Services Association. Congratulations for that, too. Johnny and her husband, Richard, have been married for twenty-six years and have two daughters and one son. Johnny enjoys camping, hiking, horseback riding, traveling, gardening, and spending time with her two dogs, two rabbits, two cats, and one horse. I don't know where you get all this time. Johnny is positive, friendly, knowledgeable, and a great representative of a good work being done at ACJS. Thank you, and congratulations to Johnny for twenty-five years of service. Thank you, and all that other thing.
Okay, now Allison wants to say something about all three? Yes, go ahead.
It is my honor to be here with these three today, and I mean, the words that I think sum it up are some of the words that were in the write-up about Kevin Jesse, and it's stability and leadership. When we look at the tenure of our employees at Ada County Juvenile Services, we find that we have more new employees than does the rest of the county as a whole, but we also have more twenty-five-year-plus employees than does the rest of the county as a whole. And we could not manage our business and all the new employees without the stability and leadership of people like this. And it's just, as I said, it's my honor to be here with them. Thank you, guys.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on their behalf? Okay, well, we'll give the awards out. We'll start with Richard. You can come up here, Richard. Anybody who wants to keep the picture taken with Richard, get up here. He's right here. Okay, Allison over here. Okay, go ahead. Okay, well, Richard?
Okay, so have a lot to move. You guys all step up a bit.
All right, we'll step up a bit. All right.
One more. Thanks.
Richard, on behalf of the Citizens of Ada County, we wish to give you this award. Thank you for your long service to the Citizens of Ada County.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Kevin?
Let's change this up a bit. Let's have.
I knew she wasn't liking it.
There we go.
Okay, come on.
Okay, that's way too, like, so we'll just. Spread out. Have it Allison, if you want to step forward like a full foot and then have a step. Okay, and then.
A little too smaller.
Yeah.
Richard into?
Okay, that's not gonna.
My own row.
How about Allison, you go in the back? Yes, there we go. Perfect. And then. All right, we'll make this work. One, two, three, yes. Okay, Allison, you're still a bit. There we go. One, two, three. Four, five.
Yep, on behalf of the Citizens of Ada County, we wish to thank you for your twenty-five years of service, dedicated service.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes.
Congratulations. Yeah, thank you for offering him up for twenty-five years. Thank you. All right, Johnny? Johnny, how are you?
I'm good. How are you?
Come on up here. Okay.
Better?
We'll get the picture here.
Thank you so much.
Well, Johnny, on behalf of the Citizens of Ada County, thank you for your twenty-five years dedicated service.
Thank you.
All right. Absolutely. Well, thank you, everybody, for coming. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for coming. Thanks for being here. Thanks for your service.
Thank you.
Katie, how you doing?
Good. How are you?
Good, all right.
Okay, we have a procurement. Next up?
Yes.
The final rankings. And the unfinished business. I guess we need to motion to remove unfinished business from the table.
I move to remove the unfinished business from the table for consideration.
Second. Okay, you've heard a motion on favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Go ahead.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Before you this morning, under unfinished business is the award recommendation for RFP two-four-zero-one-nine, design build of Ada County Public Safety Building Elevator Modernization. And the evaluation team has completed the evaluations for this project and would like to submit an award recommendation letter for your consideration.
Okay, if you agree to the letter?
I'd be happy to. It's a letter dated February twentieth, two thousand twenty-four, to the Board of Ada County Commissioners from Ada County Procurement regarding RFP two-four-zero-one-nine. Dear members of the board, the evaluation committee has evaluated the responses for RFP two-four-zero-one-nine. A final ranking of qualified candidates was determined by evaluation scoring. The final rankings in order of evaluation scoring are as follows. Number one, TK Elevator Corporation with a score of ninety-two. Number two is Young Elevator Incorporated with a score of seventy-six point eight-five. It is a recommendation of the evaluation group to award the contract for RFP two-four-zero-one-nine to TK Elevator Corporation as a number-one-ranked proposer.
Okay, and what was the dollar amount again?
This one, they proposed a dollar amount of a hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay. Okay, I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the final rankings and award a recommendation of the evaluation committee for RFP two-four-zero-one-nine, design build of Ada County Public Safety Building Elevator Modernization, and award RFP two-four-zero-one-nine to TK Elevator Corp.
That's correct.
For a one-hundred, in the amount of one hundred and eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, that's the proposed amount. It is design-built, so depending on how the design ends up, it could be more, a little more, it could be a little less.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioner.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have, I'll open a public hearing on Resolution two-nine-six-zero, a resolution for sole source procurement of Rapid SOS premium software services. Public hearing being open, do we have any discussion on it or any comments? Guess not. I'll close the public hearing on Resolution number twenty-nine sixty and ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution number two-nine-six-zero as listed on the agenda.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard a motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now we have some catering permits and a couple of new licenses. I'll accept a motion.
I move to approve the licenses as listed on the agenda, including one catering permit and two new licenses, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. What we have with us today, a representative of the clerk.
That's right. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. You'll see on the agenda under the agreements, we have one for our office where the recording team is going to be updating their software to implement Tyler Technology software. So, we appreciate your support in that. We are ninety days out from Election Day, so that team's really gearing up. They're working hard over there, getting ready for all of those things. And then, other than that, we're keeping an eye on what's going on down at the legislature.
When does filing start?
March fourth.
March fourth?
Yep.
And closes?
Two weeks after that, what would be the day? Fifteenth.
March fourth to fifteenth.
That's right.
Okay. Good enough. Anything else?
No, that's it.
Good enough. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, I see some chatter online, people saying that there's a new system you have that you want people to schedule an appointment to bring in declarations of candidacy.
Yeah, that's just simply to avoid any delays or anything like that if you didn't schedule an appointment, which we would still accept any walk-ins for that, but it's just if you would like to get that extra time with our staff and make sure that they're available to help, that you utilize that appointment structure, so.
Is that, are you including precinct commitment in there who kind of have a quicker in and out?
Anyone who wants to schedule an appointment is welcome to do so, but like I said, if they're going to be quick and they've done this before, they don't need to schedule an appointment.
People can still fly in at four fifty-nine on the last day and be okay.
That's to happen, yes.
Okay. I will let people know.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you. All right, next up, we have a claims journal. I'll accept the motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to authorize payment of claims on the claims journal dated February sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
I second the motion.
All right, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have the personnel actions. I'll accept a motion on the personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain in the file in the Commissioner's office.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have next, we have our distinguished assessor with us today. Would you like to give us any kind of a report or welcome back to the panel? I guess you've had some issues.
Good morning. Good to see you.
Yes.
We have some tax cancellations on the agenda, but I thought I'd give you an update on the Board of Tax Appeals. We have received eight decisions back, and they ruled in our favor. We have decisions still pending on twenty-seven properties.
Twenty-seven properties?
Yep.
Hasn't any of them moved to the next level?
Not so far.
Good. Okay.
How many total? So, those are all appeals from the, from BOE?
Correct.
How many total appeals did we get?
Sounds like about thirty-five.
Okay.
Hundred and fourteen total BTA bills.
They didn't all go to.
Seventy, seventy-nine were resolved prior to going to a.
Is that in line with previous years?
It's, it's pretty close.
Yeah. All right. Well, thank you. Anything else you want to? All right, well, thanks. Thank you. Okay, so we have some tax cancellations, which are not really cancellations, they're just adjustments to the taxes, but code calls and tax cancellations, so I'll accept a motion.
I'll move to approve the tax cancellations as listed on the agenda, which includes three tax cancellations for twenty twenty-one, four tax cancellations for twenty twenty-one, nine tax cancellations for twenty twenty-three, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, is there anyone from the Treasurers' Office who wants to speak to us?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here on behalf of the Treasurers' Office.
Oh, okay.
Just a quick update for our office. We're working hard on these tax cancellations, getting them processed. And our office has also been involved in some of the legislation that is, House Bill five-two-one is in committee hearing today.
Is that a good bill or a bad bill?
It's good. The part we've been working on has just been some kind of administrative and technical language regarding some cleanup from last year's House Bill two-nine-two.
Changing the dates and a few things, correct? Yeah, making it a little more malleable.
Yeah, a little easier to implement, yeah.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just, so they did listen to the Treasurers and they're included in this bill?
Yeah, there's definitely been a lot of feedback in the bill, you know, from, they work with the Association of Counties and the Association of County Treasurers as well.
Okay, well, great.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have some contracts. So, with the Expo Idaho, I will accept a motion.
I move to approve the five interim event agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have Barbara Park Education and Event Center. I'll accept the motion.
I'll move to approve the one Barbara Park Education and Event Center agreement as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, now we have eight agreements. I reviewed all the agreements. Is there any discussion or any issues with any of the agreements?
Those are some of the ones you were talking about, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, that's for the, there's one on here for the, Heather.
Yes.
All right, I'll accept the motion.
I move to approve the eight agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
Is there a second to the motion?
Do we need to add EMS on there?
It's in a separate, that's in the EMS.
It's the same motion.
No, that's, they ain't have, that's.
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, you've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Now, we have the weekly indigent items. I'll accept a motion on the weekly indigent items.
I'll move to accept the recommendations of the indigent services staff as listed on the summary of cases dated February twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and authorize the chair to sign the documents on behalf of the board.
I second the motion.
You've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up, under miscellaneous, we have a request for reconsideration for project number two-oh-two-three-zero-one-eight-nine-one, VCU CSP, a motion for reconsideration. Is there a motion?
I move to deny the request for reconsideration of project number two-zero-two-three-zero-one-eight-nine-one, VCU CSP Endora.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
You've heard the motion. On favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Is there any further business needs to be brought before the board today? Hearing none, we're adjourned. Thank you. Well, good morning.
Good morning.
Today is the twentieth day of February. The Board of Commissioners, sitting as a Board of the County Emergency Medical Services District, is in session to conduct its weekly open business meeting. All three commissioners are present, and we also have with us.
Oh, the Duncan Communications?
Sean Rain, Paramedics.
And IT guy. Okay, are there any changes to the agenda, Madam Clerk? Okay, are there any changes to the agenda, ma'am clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, and first item up is the claims journal.
Mr. Chairman, I move to authorize payment of the claims on the claims journal for EMS dated February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four.
Second. Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next up, we have personnel actions.
I move to approve the personnel actions as listed on the agenda, and that the summary sheet remain on file in the Commissioner's office.
I second the motion.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have two agreements. Renewal of the sublease agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services District and St. Luke's for the paramedic station, and the renewal of agreement between Ada County Emergency Medical Services and the Zoll Medical Corporation for X-series cardiac monitor supplies. Okay, is there any discussion on these agreements? Right now, accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the two agreements as listed on the agenda and authorize the chair to sign the docu, appropriate documents on behalf of the board.
Okay, is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay, you've heard the motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay, next up, we have EMS update.
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Good morning. Not a big update today. Um, haven't heard about our bill going to committee yet. But there's still a little bit of time. It will probably go, I would imagine, to Health and Welfare Self-Privilege Committee, so they didn't have to hit that thirty, thirty-six day. But we did have a meeting last week, just kind of walking through different things on funding as we move forward. Even if the bill does go this year, it's, the work isn't going to be done. So, it's been a pretty good discussion. Commissioner Dance from Fremont County sits on that, that committee with us, so he's been a big help. Beyond that, we have, next Monday, we have a focus group of some of our staff members that will be sitting down with Sean Miller from HR and running through our new mission, vision, and values, just to get some feedback so that we can get that finalized and put in stone, if you will. So, that is it for today.
Well, good. Any questions or discussions? Uh, Harry Nunn, we thank you for your service.
Thank you.
I like those kind of reports.
Yeah. Yeah, it's nice to get a short report. That's good. And I guess we don't have any, 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 any COVID coming up.
It's a, I, you know, CDC actually last week, and I don't know that they finalize it, but they're gonna treat it like the flu now, where you just have to be free of fever for twenty-four hours to be able to return to work and stop isolating, so. Just like any other disease.
Yeah, which is what was predicted.
Yep.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll be adjourned.
All right.
All right, thanks.